Welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of August 7, 2023. In accordance with L B 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on items should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization, or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last month, or excuse me, on the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for our first item?
Just a reminder to everyone that we are now using a light system to help aid the timing of any public testemoning. So you'll see lights up here on the monitors provided. Green will indicate the start of your testimony. Yellow means you have one minute left, and then it will turn red when your time is over. Up first, we have our consent agenda, which are items one and two.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on anything on the consent agenda? That's items one and two. Anyone here to speak on any consent agenda items? Yes, Director?
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Ryan Weber. I'm Director of Lincoln City Libraries, and it's my pleasure to speak in favor of Patty Beitler, who is the Library Board's recommendation for a library, the new Library Board appointment, which will run from this fall through 2030. And Patty Beitler is the Board's recommendation. Patty came from a candidate pool of 24 folks who took time to consider appointment and put an application in. And I couldn't have said it better than Board Chairman Dan Sloan, who wrote this recommendation to the Library Board recommending Patty. Some of the things that stood out for the committee were Ms. Beitler's experience as a longtime reporter and editor for the Journal Star newspaper here in Lincoln. Through that, she has had an abundance of connections and a deep understanding of who's who and how things work in our city. As reporter, she has a deep respect for intellectual freedom and First Amendment rights, but balances that with the ability to see a variety of viewpoints and a strong need to be fair and representative of a variety of opinions. Ms. Beitler has been involved with a variety of organizations, including those focused on literacy, libraries, arts, and human services. The passion Ms. Beitler has for the libraries and the excitement and energy she will bring to her term on the Board was very apparent. We believe Patty to be an excellent choice for our Board.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for Director? All right, seen none. Thank you. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on any item listed under one or two today's consent agenda? All right, seen none. Brandy, why don't you move us forward?
Okay, we can now vote on these items. Item 1A is reappointing Patrick Finnegan and Eric Hope to the Citizen Police Advisory Board for terms to expire November 17, 2025, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington. Discussion. Seen none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1B is reappointing Hugh Seick to the Examining Board of Plumbers for a term to expire February 1, 2026, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Show. Discussion. Yes, Councilman.
Is this Hugh Seick Jr., Senior, or the Third?
Well, let's see if anyone has the answer to that question. Not sure that we do. Okay, and I don't see a representative from Building Safety down here.
Check.
Okay.
As a Junior, I always make sure the Junior's on there. Especially if my dad's in town.
I never thought we could call you Junior.
Little winnings when I went by most of the time.
We'll wait a moment and see if we have anyone from Building Safety here, or perhaps Okay, seems like we do not have anyone here.
Can I move that we move that for a week?
Okay, is there a second? Delay that for a week? Second, Bowers? Okay, very good. Madam Clerk, do you want to call the roll? Yeah, motion to delay for 1B for one week?
Yes, sorry. Weber?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Show?
No.
Washington?
No.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 4 to 3. Next up is item 1C, which is reappointing James Lang and Vance Barons to the Building Code Board of Appeals for terms to expire April 1, 2026, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington. Seen none, please call the roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1D is appointing Patty Beitler to the City of Lincoln Library Board for a term to expire August 31, 2030, introduced by Carlson.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Washington. Discussion.
I'll just take a moment to thank Ms. Beitler for her dedication to Lincoln over the years, but also the dedication specifically to the City of Lincoln Library Board. Ms. Beitler has been a longtime dedicated volunteer for One Book One Lincoln, I think since its inception, in addition to many other community boards and service, and I think we're lucky to have her time commitment and giving of her abilities to the Lincoln City Libraries. Please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 1E is the distribution of investment earnings from idle funds for the month ending June 30, 2023, introduced by Duden.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Weber. Discussion. Seen none, please call the roll.
Show?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Item 2A is a setting the hearing date for a liquor resolution, introduced by Show.
So moved. Help me out, guys.
There's a second?
Second.
Second, Weber. Discussion. Seen none, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. That ends our consent agenda. Next up, we have our public hearing liquor resolutions. I will be calling item 4A and 4B together to the application of Best Kept Secret LLC, doing business as Best Kept Secret, for a Class C liquor license located at 2737 North 49th Street and the related manager application.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Can you actually please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
If you could just please start with your name and address.
Indeed. My name is John Kalouasiri. Some people call me JK. The address is 2737 North 49th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska.
Very good. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Please tell us a little bit about your application.
Well, I actually moved to Lincoln about eight years ago, and I want to say I have become a proud Lincolnite. Since being in Lincoln, I've had two children, making it a total of four. So I want to share this because everything I'm doing here is really in the spirit of bettering Lincoln and improving the space that we are living. So we put in an application to get a liquor license at the U N I place, and what we're trying to do over there is to create a hub where people can come and relax and enjoy themselves, but also have an intellectual conversation. One thing I didn't mention earlier is that I'm actually a teacher. I used to teach at Washington State University for seven years before I came to the University of Nebraska. I've been there for eight years. I'm here with my colleagues, who are at the back over there. They're going to be functioning as managers of the space, Best Kept Secret. Let me also quickly add that we realized after paying the fees and applying that we need to actually do some more work. So we found out recently that we are not ready, and would like to actually ask you humbly to vote, perhaps to delay this application until we are ready. I've been working with Brian, and he can shed more light on that. We learned recently that we're going to need a special application, and that will entail actually meeting with the neighbors, which we have been doing, to make sure everyone is fine with it. We've been doing it, and we've been getting really positive response from our neighbors. And Brian will have all the technical details he would like to share with regards to our application. So again, humbly, I'd like to ask, perhaps you delay the vote until we are ready, so that we have everything in place. And I also learned part of the delay would include us paying an additional $1,000, over $1,000 in special permit fees, which we are ready to pay as well, to make sure everything goes well. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any questions for the applicant while we have them up here?
How many weeks does he want?
You want to ask?
Yeah, how many weeks do you want?
Maybe I'll call him, yes, I'll call him Brian to help us, because again, there are some technical issues that involve maybe up to a month or, I'm not sure.
Okay, let's, okay, well, I think that we're good with the questions from up here. So, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Maybe we'll ask Mr. Will if he would like to come up and explain to us a little bit about the situation that the applicant finds himself in, and it seems as though we have an application before us, Mr. Will, but it seems as though the applicant may need to be going through other applications as well. Okay.
Yes, Brian Will, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, 68508. Yeah, so the application, the license application for you today, staff has reviewed it. It does not comply with local zoning, and so I think the letter from Investigator Parker is that suggesting, recommendation of not approving this. So because of this location, there is no way it can meet the requirements for a special permit, so that's not going to happen. However, by virtue of its location, it is within the boundary of the University Place P U D. So there is another mechanism for this location to potentially get to where this applicant needs to be. That is, the specific requirements of noncompliance can be adjusted as part of the P U D. Okay.
Okay.
That process, the next deadline, earliest deadline that this applicant can meet, and I think he intends to this Wednesday, is going to take approximately eight to 10 weeks, because that has to go to planning commission and then come for the City Council for three readings. So I don't think there's any way that this can be delayed long enough in order to satisfy the requirements of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Let's, do you want to call Investigator Parker?
I would like to ask Investigator Parker a question, and I'd also like then to ask Mr. Will another question.
Investigator Parker, 575 South 10th Street.
Thank you.
Can you walk us through the memo that you sent regarding the zoning issues and if an eight to 10 week delay has to happen because of a P U D amendment, where does that leave us on the first permit?
So I have, so to walk you through it, it kind of explains the zoning issues as I understood them. And then that, I guess, third paragraph kind of details, I have a statutory time limit to get this back to the state, and it's a 45-day time limit by the, as soon as they send it to the clerk's office and I receive it. Now, that being said, I talked to my colleague at the State Patrol, who looks at it from the state's purview, and from what he's saying, from what he's seen, there's nothing to show that they should deny it on the state side. It's simply just a local issue right now. Now, if you do vote to deny it, it doesn't mean that the applicant can't come back and reapply on the local level once that eight to 10 weeks is up and the zoning comes into compliance. But unfortunately, we just have a 45-day time window to forward this back to the state. But just because we deny it doesn't mean that it's never going to happen.
Do we have to deny it? Can we just delay it or postpone a decision? Or do we only have a choice of?
The way that I understand it, we have a choice of approving or denying it at this point in time. Now...
Can he withdraw it?
He could potentially withdraw it from the state side of things, but the issue that we're running up to is if we postpone this another week or two, then now we're going to be out of compliance to that 45-day window.
Understood.
Is the issue. So what we can do, potentially, and I don't mean to interrupt, but if you do deny it, I can call the commission and say, hey, look, we denied it specifically based off of the zoning. Can you just withdraw the application altogether? And then when he's ready to reapply, gets everything in order with zoning and stuff like that, just resubmit it, if that makes sense.
I think it makes sense from this side. Would the applicant need to pay again?
Pay again.
The application fee?
I'm not sure on the state. There's something we, potentially, we could work out, potentially, but I can't give a definitive yes or no on that.
All right.
So it, I know there is a chance if he withdraws the application, there's a chance that they will just kind of keep it in purgatory, if you will, and then wait for everything to come back in the line and then resubmit it. But I've never seen one come this far along with this, so.
And if I may, Councilwoman, I, oftentimes, folks that want to go about doing business don't necessarily know the way to go about that.
Correct.
Or the order in which to do that. If there was an opportunity for the applicant to come back before us, perhaps maybe with not paying the fee again because it was out of order, I would be very grateful if that opportunity existed, but understand it may not.
Correct.
And that's okay. You know, the impetus for a person wanting to do business is to know how to go about that process.
Correct.
So I thank you for the investigation of that possibility, but understand that may not be possible, given the circumstances in which we find ourselves.
And I'll certainly work with the applicant. I'll contact them out in the hallway and then just keep them in the loop, call my connections within the Liquor Commission, and see if there's anything we can do, because this is a very abnormal issue to arise. Typically, if it's a zoning issue, it's just that we cannot approve it at all, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
No.
Deny.
Yeah. We'll do it at the end, we'll do a bunch of denies, a bunch of approvals.
Yep. Anyone else wanting to talk to any other staff member on 4A or 4B? Okay, let's move on to 4C.
Item 4C is application of ACR Corporation, doing business as Jake Cigars and Spirits, to expand its Class C C S G liquor license for an additional outdoor area measuring approximately nine feet by 47 feet at 101 North 14th Street.
Is there anyone here to speak on item 4C? Hello, welcome.
Don't get us go?
Go ahead and say your name and address, and then you can just go.
Okay, my name is Sean Dunbar. Address is 101 North 14th Street, Suite 1, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508.
All right, Sean, could you tell us a little bit about what we have before us?
Yeah, so this is my application to extend my liquor license for 26 more seats on patio that I'm building for the outside of our bar.
Beautiful. That sounds enjoyable.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited. We waited a long time for this, so.
All right, perfect, perfect. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, seen none. Thank you so much for coming down, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 4C? All right, let's move on to 4D.
I'll actually be reading items 4D through 4F together. It's the application of Yard Investments LLC, doing business as Gate 25, as well as Bar at the Yard LLC, doing business as Longwells, and Homegrown Industries Lincoln, doing business as Mellow Mushroom, for a joint special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 50 feet by 200 feet at Canopy Street from R to Q Street on August 19, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Is there anyone here to speak on items 4D, 4E, or 4F? Hello?
Hello?
Welcome.
Brandon Ackert, 747 O Street, number 430, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508.
Seems like we're having an event.
We're having an event, so it's a little bit unique. I, in my infinite trying to delegate tasks to people, I have charged a student with putting together this event. So there might be a lot of holes in it, you probably have a lot of questions, I'm here to answer everything.
Wow.
So...
Okay, why don't you give us an overview?
So, this event is called Bush Light Day. It's just a little day party in a celebration of Bush Light, just because we sell a lot of it, so why not? There are teams competing in this event, we have different games they're supposed to play. There's three-point shooting, there's dunk tanking, there's an inflatable obstacle course, there's giant memory, and then there's one surprise at the end that I don't want to say publicly because they're going to hate and love it, but it involves ice and a T-shirt, and it's going to be difficult for them to achieve. But, so the team that completes all the tasks in the best time wins free Bush Light for a year, and that doesn't mean what you think it means. It's a little bit watered down, it's just 365 cans, and they have to pick it up at a later date. They do not get it the day of. So that's kind of a little competition, there's going to be a band, there's going to be food trucks, and the street is just an addition to where we can put our dunk tank, our obstacle course, as well as the food trucks, so that most people can sit in the rail yard. And the memory is going to be in the rail yard, so is the three-point shooting contest. So that's the general snapshot of what's going on, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for that overview, I appreciate it. Do we have questions for the applicant? Councilman Duden?
Does that mean they have to show up each day for that 300?
No, no, they're going to come at a later date with a truck, and I'm going to hand it, 365 cans, and then they're going to go away.
Okay.
Yep.
That's a lot of cans.
One a day.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Should we be thinking American Ninja contest when we think obstacle course? Is it very extensive?
I would, if toddlers were running American Ninja, yes. It's like an inflatable, you jump in the tube, you climb over the ladder, you go in a circle. I haven't seen the thing yet, because we had to switch companies. Long story short, we did, we found what the city likes. So I haven't seen it yet, it's about 50 feet, so it's just a matter of how long it takes you and your team to get through.
Okay.
Does that kind of make sense?
It does make sense.
A little safer than American Ninja. And way less athletic.
I'm sure a lot of people want to know how to train for this event, so it's a fair question.
Yeah, it is a fair question.
Andre, you have to change your training.
Yeah.
Any questions on this side? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming down and sharing the details of, is it Bush Delight Day?
Bush Delight Day.
Okay.
Maybe it's annual, I don't know, we'll see.
Okay, very good.
9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
9:00 a.m. to 9:00.
I just put in the application for 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., but it's only going to be from like 2:00 to 5:00. It's just a short, I just, when we put it in, planning purposes.
Set up, tear down.
We just umbrellaed it, but it's only during the day, and we'll tear it all down once we're done, so that the evening can be the evening.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's move on to 4G.
Item 4G is application of Bar at the Yard LLC, doing business as Longwells, for special designated licenses to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 50 feet by 100 feet at 350 Canopy. Item four G is application of Bar at the Yard LLC doing business as Longwells for special designated licenses to cover an indoor area measuring approximately fifty feet by a hundred feet at three fifty Canopy Street on August eleventh, twelfth, fifteenth, sixteenth, and twentieth, twenty twenty-three, from two AM to six AM, and to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately a hundred and sixty feet by seventy-four feet at three fifty Canopy Street on August twentieth, twenty twenty-three, from four AM to six AM.
Before we uh take public test testimony on item four G, I would just like to state that the applicant has requested that the um application be withdrawn. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on item four G? Anyone here to testify on four G? Alright, seeing none.
Mr. Chair, do we need a motion to withdraw four G?
Would you like to go ahead and do so?
Right there. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we withdraw item four G from our agenda today.
Second? Second, Carlson, could you please call the roll?
Cho.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we deny application and the items four A and four B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Mr. Chair, my final motion for this section of our agenda, I'd like to make move approval of items four C through four F.
There a second?
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. That ends our liquor resolutions, we can now move on to public hearing resolutions. Item five A is approval of amendment number one of the annexation agreement for North Bank Junction between the city Roger S Roger H Schisau, trustee of the Roger H Schisau Revocable Trust, Eldana Schisau, trustee of the Eldana Schisau Revocable Trust, and HH Development.
Ms. Latrell.
Good afternoon, Abby Latrell, City Law Department, five 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 South Tenth Street. And what I have for you today is an amendment to an annexation, this is the North Bank um annexation agreement from two thousand and four. And you can see here that in two thousand and four, this was the area that was annexed. And as part of this agreement, we said, yes, well, annex this agreement or this area as part of that, you um the Schisaus and Heartland Homes will um build part of Arbor Road and make some other improvements in here. And also as part of this agreement, the city promised um we would direct impact fees generated in this whole area. So over here, it's really small, so it's future area to be annexed. So only annexed this much, impact fees were generated here to pay here. So last year in twenty twenty-two, we had another um annexation come through the Industrial Salt Project. And as you may recall, industrial salt. Try to keep this oriented the same way, we've got North Fifty-Six and Arbor Road. Um, industrial salt annexed this portion, which was in that future annexation for North Bank Junction. And we promised impact fees generated here could be used for industrial salt to build the road. So what resulted, the result of that was we had impact fees being generated in this area, promising to pay it to two parties. So that's what this agreement does. What it does is pulls out, you can see that shape is kind of the same, says for North Bank Junction, your impact fee area is now this. So that our impact fee administrator can direct fees um generated there. And that way she's free to direct impact fees from industrial salt to go to Industrial Salt's project. It also recognized that, you know, in the almost twenty years since the North Bank Junction project, um those developers have satisfied many of their obligations, and so we just acknowledged as much. And um acknowledged that industrial salt will now be doing part of the improvements on Arbor Road. So I know that's a little convoluted, but I can answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Ms. Latrell? Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, Ms. Latrell, the bottom line, would I make would I be correct if I assumed, or if I made this statement, that Arbor Road is going to be dealt with in a combination of impact fees from two different annexations?
Probably more than two with as much development is going on out there. But yes, and all parties, the new newest annexed group and the North Bank Junction, there's been lots of communication and agreement amongst everyone. So this really cleans up the record and makes sure the impact fee administrator can send those funds where she needs to.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Latrell? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby, appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item five A? Seeing none, let's move to five B.
Item five B is approving a LPA program agreement between the City of Lincoln and State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the Waterford Trail Project for the use of state transportation alternative funds for a trail beginning at approximately North Eighty-Fourth and College Park Road and extending through Southeast Community College and the Waterford Neighborhood adjacent to Ada Robinson Elementary to North a hundred and Fourth Street and Holdridge Street.
Mr. Yost.
Good afternoon, J.J. Yost from uh Planning and Facilities Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department. This is approval of a standard agreement that we do often with um the Nebraska Department of Roads for the use of transportation alternative uh programming grant funds, so federal funds that we use to build trails. This is a multi-year um agreement, the funds are eighty percent federal funds matched with twenty percent local funds that we um our local funds come from the impact fees that are collected in this benefit district. Um, the trail is just an extension of our network of trails from the ninety-eight or excuse me, Eighty-Fourth Street Trail through Southeast Community College um campus, and then on through the Waterford Estates Development, ending up at the corner of about Ninety-Eighth and Holdridge. We would anticipate the the life cycle for this project would have um engineering and environmental review going on in twenty twenty-four, right away in utility work in twenty twenty-five, and and hopefully then we'd be ready for construction of the trail in twenty twenty-six. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for J.J.? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item five B? Alright, let's move on.
We can now vote on these resolutions. Item five A, approval of amendment number one of the annexation agreement for North Bank Junction between the city Roger H Schisau, trustee of the Roger H Schisau Revocable Trust, Eldana Schisau, trustee of the Eldana Schisau Revocable Trust, and HH Development, introduced by Weber.
So moved?
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item five B, approving a LPA program agreement between the City of Lincoln and State of Nebraska Department of Transportation for the Waterford Trail Project for the use of state transportation alternative funds for a trail beginning at approximately North Eighty-Fourth and College Park Road and extending through Southeast Community College and the Waterford Neighborhood adjacent to Ada Robinson Elementary to North a hundred and Fourth Street and Holdridge Street, introduced by Carlson.
So moved?
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bowers.
Yes.
Washington.
Yes.
Duden.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Cho.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Beckus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Next up, we have our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Item six A is amending the pay schedule for employee group whose classification is assigned to the pay range, which is prefixed by X by changing the title and the range for class zero zero two four prosecution assistant to pay range X thirteen to prosecution support specialist in pay range X sixteen.
Director McIntyre.
Yes, Barb McIntyre, five seventy-five South Tenth Street. And this was a request from the legal department, they had revised this position and added some duties based on the fact that their electronic data management system had been put in place and it required some different skill sets in the prior position. So we took a look at the new skills, redid the classification study or the compensation study, and found that um, one, changing the title to update it was appropriate, two, changing the pay range based on the new requirements of the job was appropriate, and moving it from an X thirteen to an X sixteen. There are three people in this position and the budget impact is within the legal department's budget, so.
Are there questions for Director McIntyre?
Uh, Councilwoman. No, you've telepathically answered the question I was going to ask, thank you.
I've gotten better, I kind of can anticipate him now.
Very good, thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item six A? Alright, very good, let's move to six B.
Item six B, amending Lincoln Municipal Code, Section two point seven six point zero four zero, definitions to revise the definition for immediate family by amending Section two point seven six one three zero, compensation plan, position and pay range allocation. Section two point seven six point one six zero, compensation plan and variable merit pay plan, W pay ranges, Section two point seven six one seven five, compensation plan, promotion, transfer, demotion, or temporary promotion, and Section two point seven six two hundred, compensation plan, temporary assignment in a higher classification to clarify and harmonize compensation plans related to temporary promotions, pay range allocation, and temporary assignments, including project leader designation, by amending Section two point seven six two four five examinations, charter of examinations to change requirements and restrictions related to open continuous examinations, and by amending Section two point seven six three eight zero, sick leave with pay to streamline and simplify the use of sick leave.
Director.
Yes, I'm going to just briefly cover the highlights on these because there's, it looks like there's a lot, but there's really not a lot here on on the definitions. We left out grandparent and grandchild, which was never our intent. So we are just changing the immediate family definition to include those two categories. And then also just defining that immediate family includes those living in your household with the the relationships that you guys have heard before, which is by blood, marriage, adoption, foster, or persons under the employee's legal guardianship. So that's on definitions, the change there. On two seven one three zero compensation pay plans, uh, we were just cleaning up uh some of the stuff. So when we reallocate a position like we just did previously, what would happen if there was someone on original probation during that reallocation? It ended up taking them off original probation, which was never our intent. Right, we're reallocating it because the duties changed in the comp study says it should change. But if the employee's on original probation, they should serve the rest of that probationary period. So the big change to this is that reallocation can still happen, but then they serve the rest of their six-month period, however much of that is left. On one six zero, this is really uh cleanup um and removing language that uh doesn't apply. We no longer do a report to the mayor's office, so just making sure that what we do is actually what's in in code. One seven five, where it talks about temporary promotion. This is cleanup and readability and it's moving this stuff where it talks about compensation plan promotion and transfer or demotion. The temporary promotion actually has a completely different code section, which is two hundred, which is compensation plan and temporary assignment. So we come moved all the temporary promotion language into temporary assignment where someone would actually look for that language, so it was just really us moving it where it belonged. The two four five examinations, this limited, this was really looking at our pool seasons, we have a lot of lifeguards that take that that Red Cross examination they have to take to become a lifeguard. And if they miss that even by one question, they cannot retest for six months, which because it's in code, it didn't really help us facilitate trying to hire and staff. Where we do have longer examination requirements like at LFR, theirs is a year, they can only take it every year, that's already built into their policies. So by removing this from code and allowing that specific stuff to be in policy, we can allow our lifeguards to retest a little sooner and fill our positions. And the sick leave one, oh, the slight change here was just to align it with the immediate family definition and take out the grandparent, grandchild language here because if we put it in immediate family, we no longer need it in specific sick leave. So I know that was a lot really fast, so I'll stop and see if you have questions.
Questions for Barbara, yes, Councilman.
Is that that temporary uh promotion, is that the same thing as out-of-class pay?
It is, if you're getting out-of-class pay for a temporary assignment, it's considered a temporary promotion, correct.
Other questions? Okay, very good, thank you, Director.
Alright, you guys welcome, thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item six B? Let's move on to six C.
I'll be calling item six C through six E together. Item six C is Comprehensive Plan Amendment two three zero zero seven, application of Austin Realty Company to amend the Lincoln Lancaster County twenty fifty Comprehensive Plan to revise the future land use map, to revise the future land use plan from future residential use to future commercial use on property generally located at North Thirty-second and Thirty-third Streets, north of Superior Street. Item six D is the change of zone, two three zero two zero, application of Austin Realty Company to change the zoning description from R five residential district to H three highway commercial district on property generally located at North Thirty-second and Thirty-third Streets, north of Superior. And then item six E is approving the conditional zoning agreement between the city and Austin Realty Company for the property generally located at three two four zero, thirty-two hundred and thirty-two forty-five West Park Circle and five five zero five and five zero seven five, North Thirty-second Street.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Danae Kalkowski, eleven twenty-eight Lincoln Mall, Suite one oh five, appearing today on behalf of the property owner, Austin Realty, and also potential purchaser of the property. Uh, so the property we're talking about today is on the west side of North Thirty-third Street, and we're just a little bit north of like Superior would be just down to the south off of our map. We've got three requests, we're requesting a change of zone from R five to H three, requesting a comp plan amendment to change the designation from residential back to commercial. And then finally, we have a zoning um agreement that goes along with the change of zone. So just a little history, this property was originally zoned um B two, commercial, back when we did the Landmark Corporate Center original use permit out here. And I I meant to look up how long ago that was, but it wasn't in the staff report and and so probably over twenty years ago. About two thousand and eleven, uh, we came in, um, there was a potential to do a multifamily project here. And so at that time, the zoning was changed to R five and the comp plan was changed to accommodate that potential project. There is some multifamily a little bit further to the west there. That project never materialized, and so now we're back a little over ten years later with a buyer who wants to buy it and and uh make a commercial use of the property. So uh today, we're asking for the change of zone to the H three, the H three is a little bit more appropriate now, given what the surrounding zoning is to the east and to the south. Um, it will allow the commercial use that's being requested, um, requesting the comp plan amendment to to show the color back for commercial use. And then the zoning agreement that goes along with the change of zone will provide for the construction of a southbound right turn lane at the intersection with North Thirty-third Street. Um, the original plans for the road with Landmark Corporate Center didn't have the right turn lanes included, and so that was a request of the city as we go back to a commercial use here, and that was acceptable uh to the property owner. Uh, these items are all consistent with the comprehensive plan per the staff report. We were on consent agenda at the planning commission um with no testimony and obviously approval. So we'd be asking for your approval of these three items today to get us back into business so we can make some use of this property that's been sitting there for a long time.
Very good.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Danae, appreciate it. Questions for Danae? Any questions at all? Okay.
Is that a pond on there? I'll have one question.
This little pond back here?
Is that a pond?
That's what it looks like.
It's not blue.
Based on the aerial, that's out that's outside of the the part of that apartment project complex.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danae.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak? on, um, items four, or excuse me, six C, six D, or six E? Calling all of those together. Items six C, six D, and six E. Anyone else here who would like to speak on those items? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
Item six F is approving the expansion of Downtown Maintenance Business Improvement District to include a new area generally defined on the south by the north side of K Street from Thirteenth Street, on the west to Twenty-first Street, on the north by the south side of Q Street from Seventeenth to Nineteenth Street, and the south side of P Street from Nineteenth to Twenty-first Street, on the west by Thirteenth between K and M Streets, and Seventeenth between M and Q Streets, and on the east by Twenty-first Streets between K and P Streets, and including the privately owned parcels abutting the east side of Twenty-first Street.
Mr. C.
Yes, Tim C., Interim Urban Development Director, um, 555 South Tenth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Here today to present a couple items, but first, starting with the maintenance BID. Uh, this is the downtown, uh, this is an expansion of the downtown maintenance BID. The maintenance BID was originally approved, from what I can see, in nineteen ninety-seven, so it's been around for a couple of years. Um, on this map, it doesn't show up very well on here, but there are, there's green right of way, and the properties bound, uh, bounding that green white right of way on here are the existing downtown maintenance BID. Um, this, uh, expansion will move the maintenance a little bit south, uh, to include L Street, and then east of Seventeenth Street. So, think Telegraph District. That is sort of the new area that the downtown has expanded into, and this will allow the same services that are being provided in the, the existing downtown, uh, to move eastward, and so the same level of, of service will be provided, uh, moving forward if this is approved, um, into that area. Um, the assessment will be the same method. It'll still be a front-foot method, which is, um, what's been done for a number of years in the downtown maintenance BID. Um, and the services will be the same as it is throughout the rest of downtown. So, um, rather than belaboring those points, I will turn it over to folks who are, uh, far better at, at speaking about the, the BID and the history of it, um, and the success that it has become. Um, I do need to take care of a, a bookkeeping item, and that is to present the council with three, um, protest documents that we did receive in the Urban Development Department. Uh, one from GMH Communities, um, who has property at eighteen fifty P Street, uh, one from James Russell at eighteen twenty-seven through eighteen thirty-five O Street, and then one from, uh, Thompson Realty Group regarding eighteen hundred O Street, and I'll provide those to the clerk. Thought I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director C. I appreciate it. Questions for Director? Yes, Councilman Doon.
How's this paid for?
So, each property is assessed the cost of the downtown, uh, maintenance BID. So, there's one budget for the overall area, and then it's, it's, it's assessed on a front-foot basis. So, the amount of your property that borders on the, uh, right of way is measured. It's a linear foot.
So, for apartments, how does that work?
Apartments is the same as, as everyone else, and this is just the maintenance BID. The management BID comes next, and there, there is a little bit of different, uh, treatment for residential properties.
Councilman Doon.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, other questions? Yes, Councilman Show.
I'd like to ask Mr., thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. C., would you adjust the map a little bit? I can't see the bottom legend. There's.
Oh, yeah.
Slide it up. The maintenance part was missing. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm good.
Okay. Councilwoman Washington.
Mr. C., I have just a, a couple of questions. Um, first, the maintenance exam area, can you explain what the difference is between, so, there's green and yellow, excuse me, green and yellow right of way, and it's, looks like the maintenance exam area is the yellow?
Yeah, so I, exam sounds more formal than it probably is.
Yes.
Um, exam is, uh, um, only to indicate the area that was, that was explored and is being expanded into.
Okay.
So, and that, so, for the, the darker orange here in this area, that would be for the, uh, the management properties, and then the maintenance exam area are the properties bordering, bordering those orange right of ways.
Okay. And then, um, the three protests that you received?
Yes.
Um, have you looked at how much of the front footage that that, they, they encompass? Is it a, a lot of the front footage?
Um.
A, a whole block? I mean, I don't know what we're talking about.
It may be a couple of blocks, but as you can see, there are a number of, of blocks that are involved here, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't approach the statutory fifty percent requirements that are, that are in place.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Director C? Okay, very good. Uh, we have others coming up. Thank you. Mr. Ogden, the floor is yours.
All right. Good afternoon, council. Uh, my name is Todd Ogden. I'm president and CEO of the Downtown Lincoln Association, address 206 South Thirteenth, Suite 101, and Brian's here with me if you want to.
I'm Brian Muck. I'm the director of maintenance for the Downtown Lincoln Association. My office is at 244 South Antelope Valley Parkway.
Uh, yeah, so thank you, um, to Mr. C. for giving kind of the background from an urban development perspective. Uh, I just wanted to kind of give a quick update of the process that got us here. I think it's important that everybody realizes, uh, the process that was undertook and how this start and what we do. So, first of all, I just want to, uh, reiterate that our organization, the Downtown Lincoln Association, has been around since nineteen sixty-seven. Um, it was kind of formed in that area when the O Street gang got together and, um, realized the suburbs were growing, and they wanted to provide a common voice for downtown. So, um, we could always protect downtown's interests to make sure that continues to stay an area to thrive, so the entire city can thrive. Uh, and from that, eventually, these business improvement districts became popular around the country and Canada and all over the place, and Lincoln, uh, was one of the first to actually start these maintenance BIDs in the nineteen eighties. Um, we've since kind of reformed them around in nineteen ninety-seven was the, the maintenance BID as we know it today. And we also have management BIDs. So, the maintenance services are easy, and Brian will be here to answer any questions you may have of what exact services that will entail and does entail. And again, this expansion will be treated just like the rest of the bid. Everybody will get the same services that are provided within, um, the bid resolutions as they always have. Uh, so, the services that we provide are there, and on the management side, we provide economic development, um, advocacy, marketing, and most importantly, we are represented by our Board of Directors, who, uh, is an eighteen-member board, and with this expansion, we would add multiple, um, board slots for the Telegraph and the East Part District, so we can get a common voice and make sure we're represented by those people that live, work, own property downtown, small businesses, big businesses, and make sure that we know everything that's going on to help provide a voice for things that go around the city. So, that's where we're at today, and as you can see on this process, the process to expand east started in twenty nineteen, uh, where, uh, several property owners came to our organization and expressed interest in having our services expand to the rapidly developing, uh, Telegraph District. And with that, um, we did form an expansion committee to examine that area. So, that exam area is the area we looked at, um, on the east side from maintenance and management, and kind of started to see what that impact would be, what developments going on, what businesses are there. Uh, we did some walking tours. We actually slowed this down because this started before the pandemic, and we definitely didn't think it was appropriate during that time to really look at this thing, to see what kind of effects it would have on downtown. Uh, so, back, um, we kind of brought it back in twenty twenty-two, um, and invited property owners in the exam area to come to an open house, and, uh, these property owners were all invited based on their address and any emails that we may have had, but all of their addresses that are in the city clerk's office. So, they were handed out there. Uh, we had two open houses on March twenty-ninth and thirtieth, um, had a good turnout, got a feel for what the needs of the area would be, how rapidly it grows, what feel we have. So, we had a really positive response there. Um, we then, after that meeting, sent out what the actual assessment estimates would be. Um, our goal for this process all along is, we've wanted to continue to try to reach out to the property owners and businesses as much as possible before it went to council, um, and didn't want any surprises. So, we did send what our estimate, um, would be for their assessment, and also to take a survey to, um, express their interest. From that, we got a really positive response. We received nineteen of the property owners, uh, in that area. Um, eighteen of those eventually expressed interest in being part of the BID, so we used that intel to meet with the expansion committee, narrow down some of the properties, figure out what the surroundings would be, um, hone down what our services would be for all of the bid, look at our budget, and then we set up another open house with our finalized boundaries, which are the boundaries that are proposed to you today, to meet with properties. And we had a really good response to that. Um, we had a lot of people who hadn't yet heard of it that came to that, thankfully, and were able to explain to them, because this is very complicated. I've been working this for seventeen years, and it's very hard to get a hold of that. So, I'm always appreciative of anybody that reaches out to us and happy to talk about the bid at any time. And so, we met with them there, and then from that point, we wanted to put the, uh, expansion results from that second open house and sent out another mailer to the property owners to let them know, as we did the board election ballots, that this would be coming up to city council to give them yet another mailer. So, we ended up sending about four or five mailers throughout this process, along with those three open houses. Um, so, from there, um, as you all know, the bid election board was created, and they officially adopted those boundaries that are proposed today, and we're starting this process now. So, if this were to be approved as is, we would start our services September one, and those who are assessed this, um, special assessment, um, would not pay it until, uh, next year. So, we, uh, offer our services and provide our services, and there's a board of equalization that you know all every year, where our property owners have the right to, um, equalize and make sure we did what we were supposed to do. And again, we're very proud of our record there, and we take this downtown very seriously, and just really excited to continue our services. It's really important to us, as downtown continues to grow, that every neighborhood that has that downtown feel, um, has representation. We're getting larger downtown, so we want to make sure every district has its unique identity. We don't want to overtake any identity, but help support that like we have in other areas of downtown. And you'll hear that from some others probably about when we expanded to the West Hay Market, for example. That was our most recent expansion in twenty fourteen. Uh, we did renew in twenty sixteen as well. Uh, so, we've been through this a lot, and again, like, there's a lot of details, there's a lot of services, and be happy to answer any questions on that, and especially maintenance services. Brian can answer questions on that. So, with that, I'll kind of leave it up to you all. And again, I want to, I do want to make it clear that today we're voting on the expansion. It's not voting on the entire bid. This is voting on if we expand to the bid. Um, if not, this would go back to our bid operations as is, which is, uh, the other, you know, the main colors that were in the other area. So, appreciate that.
Well, thank you both for being here. We appreciate it. Any questions for these gentlemen? Councilman, yes, please.
Thanks, Tom. Um, some of the concerns that I've heard from at least some of the residents is that, you know, they pay taxes in that, that area, they're paying for parking, and, uh, then your additional service on top of that. And what they're complaining about is, why should I have to pay additional when I have to step over, uh, people sleeping on the sidewalk, drunks, uh, trash, garbage left by intoxicated people, that sort of thing? How has your organization, uh, attacked that problem?
Yes, that is a really great question. And yeah, first of all, residents, and my quick answer is because we provide tremendous value for the residents, certainly, and again, um, even after this, regardless of whether we expand or not, I always encourage our residents to call. I get a text. I always say this. I get a text almost every morning from a new resident showing us, you know, if there is an issue downtown, and we're here to help support it. So, our maintenance crew certainly has eyes and ears out on the street every day.
Do they call?
Uh, what's that?
Do they call?
Uh, yeah, I get calls as well, but once you get the text, that, that comes a lot faster. So, we got that pretty quickly. But our, our residential does, in the management BID, they only pay forty-five percent of the downtown bid, and that was created when we renewed. So, we wanted to provide the residents the specific value they received in the forty-five percent portion of our budget. And when we go over our budget, we report that. And we have several residents as part of our board, so we want to take that seriously. We also have a residential council, um, that we want to look at, especially as we're getting more and more residents downtown of all different types of areas and different types of people. So, we want to make sure that voice continues to grow, and specifically to, um, the population experiencing homelessness or panhandling or loitering. That is definitely something we take very seriously. I started at our organization seventeen years ago, working on a homeless awareness campaign, educating the community on crisis and chronic homelessness, and we found it really early. A lot of what happens, we cannot arrest our way out of it. We have to figure out how to work with them. So, about five years ago, our organization partnered with CenterPoint, and that partnership has helped us place dozens and dozens of individuals experiencing homelessness into placed housing. Certainly not every population wants to be placed in housing, but they also provide peer-to-peer support and support to our businesses and residents. So, when they have issues, we have a direct line that they can now call, and we had a recent open house with our residents that I think went really well with the city and CenterPoint and LPD. So, we have a downtown systems response group. So, our residents are able to come to that and provide a voice because we want to stay on top of this, because, uh, a lot of downtowns have seen drastic increases, and for Lincoln, it takes three, four, five individuals to make it feel like it's a lot. So, we have to stay ahead of this, and that's one thing that our organization, with our help with CenterPoint, does to make sure that if there are issues like that, we need to figure out what the solutions are. Um, unfortunately, a lot of them aren't as quick solutions as I'd like, and we, we always look for quick solutions, but also long-term solutions to see how do we curtail, um, you know, any, um, safety issue we may have, or are there nooks and crannies, or are there design issues? There's a lot of that too, where, um, it's easier to hide out in different spots, or, um, are there policy issues? But for the most part, a lot of it is solved by that peer, peer-to-peer support that CenterPoint provides us, and we're really appreciative of the, of the work that's been done, and we want to continue to enhance that. So, that's my, uh, I guess my short version, but maybe a long version to your answer.
Uh, during all of that, though, I've never heard you mention anything about the police. How do you involve the police?
Yes, the police is, yeah. So, uh, the police is also involved, involved with the downtown systems response team. Um, so, they have a couple officers that are on, on, on that group, and they work really well, um, with CenterPoint and our homeless coalition as well. I also have regular meetings with Captain Don Schoenheist, who was with the center team, now officially the Southwest, but there, have that activity downtown, and just met with him the other day to talk about some of this issue as well. So, we're really, really, um, I feel good about how they've approached us as a neighborhood to see that. I think the hardest thing is to continue to make sure residents know, and that's why I like being on the public face right now, because a lot of the times, if they're multi-story businesses, it's really hard to get the residents' emails, or you could send a ton of mailers or, or try to get out there, but if they don't know how to contact, or we can't, we want to make sure we can, so they know that this is available, because we want residents to come to these meetings, or at least come to us, so we can say what their problems are, so we can tell the police. So, the police are involved in that systems response group as well.
Last question. Um, once upon a time, there was what's called Center Team, which covered the downtown area.
Yes.
And, uh, now downtown's kind of carved up, uh, between, uh, the four teams. Do you feel like that's been, uh, detrimental to, uh, the downtown area?
Uh, I, um, asked that very question to Captain Don, and I, I don't want to speak for him, because this is relaying what we talked about, and he felt very comfortable with how quickly their team has responded. I don't want to relay his specific stats, but he does have specific stats on his response time, and he felt it was even quicker than when they had the center team. Um, so, a lot of it's the resources, but for us, we'll take any resources we can get for police downtown and making sure, especially knowing how to be creative on when to be there. I know you used to have to work events that, you know, sometimes you need that extra special focus and, and knowing that, and I think they've done a good job of moving around. But as downtown changes, especially, we're becoming more of that urban neighborhood, um, the changes for the need of the police is going to be more focused on residents as opposed to eight to five businesses. There's going to be more of a mix. Uh, again, because we're, from two thousand and ten, we had three thousand residents. We're looking with current development to go up to ten thousand residents downtown. So, we have to make sure that our urban neighborhood feels strong and safe and a place that people want to be a part of.
Very good. Good speaker.
Any other questions, Councilman? Any other questions, sir?
No, no, thanks. Thank you.
Very good. Yep. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Ogden? Yes, Mr. Show, Councilman, Councilperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Ogden, thanks for coming forward. I did speak with someone earlier about the cost and how it's assessed and how it's paid, and is it, are you, do you build the city? Do we give you a grant? How, could you explain a little bit about?
Yes.
How that, thank you. I'll stop talking.
That's a great question. So, we are technically the Downtown Lincoln Association. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(6), and we are contracted by the city. So, after this is approved, we would have to amend our contract. So, we have a contract with the city that goes out to bid every four years now, and we are then contracted by the city to operate the BID. So, as it's approved, we are contracted to provide the services that we talked about today, whether it be maintenance services or management. We have two of bids because per state legislation, you cannot have a different type of rate, um, in one bid, so we have to have two, because it would not be fair to assess a maintenance rate for somebody that doesn't have maintenance footage or vice versa. Um, so, um, what happens at the end of the year of our, um, our program, each fiscal year, which goes from September one and ends August thirty-first, uh, the city, uh, in urban development puts together, and the clerk sends out special assessment notices to the property owners, um, so they are aware of what their assessment is. So, they see their assessment. They're also given a date for board of equalization, so they can come say, we felt we did or did not receive these services. Again, I'm very proud to say, we have, in the years I've been with TLA, we've never had one person equalize us. Um, and again, like, a, a lot of it comes from open communications. So, they receive that there, and then they have a couple months to pay that special assessment. So, it is officially, um, billed by the city. So, the city that we work with, we work with the Urban Development Department, and we have, uh, quarterly, um, statements that when we spend our money, then we borrow that from the city, because they collect it after the year is over. And, um, that started out with a reserve to begin with, because that first year, if you didn't have the pot to start out with, but we've been going on long enough where every year, we do not collect from the property owners, the city does not collect from the property owners, until our services are done. So, they don't pay advance. They pay the services that they should have and definitely should have been provided by have been provided by our organization. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
And again, the maintenance is assessed on front footage, which is roughly $4 and...
Like, $4.30?
Forty, $4.30 a front foot. And the city matches that. And that's in part partnership, where the city would have to be there anyway. And what this does is creates a true public-private partnership, where our organization can enhance the area much better than the city would be with their broad resources and have to stretch out the whole city. Because I don't think the other property owners want to pay for that. And our downtown properties also don't want to see an area get dilapidated. We have seen, and the city's admitted, in some areas that they've expanded out east, when you do that, it's hard to maintain that without the BID. And that's exactly why the property owners came to us, because they wanted to see the same value that the rest of downtown got. Because you can see a clear adjustment from 17th Street, and wanted to see that value. But again, I don't want to force ourselves into any area. It, it comes through a process where the property owners come to us. And then on the management side, it's based on front, it's based on value. So if you're a non-residential property, you pay roughly $1.05 per $1,000 of assessment. And the residential only pays 45% of that, which is earmarked in our, in our bid, which, in our bid budget as well. So that, they get two separate bills for the maintenance and the management bid, and pay that. And again, those assessments all come with the services that we're supposed to provide, which are in our contract document.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Show. Any other questions for Mr. Ogden? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item five, or excuse me, 6F? Hi, Tom.
Good afternoon. How are you?
Good.
Tom Klein, 1314O Street. And is Chair-elect for Downtown Lincoln Association Board. The board supports the expansion. It's undergoing a thorough and thoughtful three-year process going through this. I've been a downtown resident for the last 10 years, and a downtown employee for over 20 years. And I'm confident in the value that DLA provides, and would support that expansion into the area.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Klein? Okay, thank you so much.
Afternoon, Council. Andrew Lemka, 600 P Street, Suite 200, representing Nelnet and Speedway Properties, and our properties in the Telegraph District. We are also in strong support of expanding the bid to the new exam area. First, the scale that DLA has from a landscaping and maintenance point of view is something that couldn't be replicated for us on a single property-by-property basis. So we see a lot of value there. Additionally, the continuity that the DLA will then provide from, you know, the west with the Hay Market, through central downtown, to the east side of downtown, we think provides a lot of value, again, to have people transitioning from each of those different distinct areas, but still having that cohesiveness between the respective areas. Additionally, with the, let's say, non-traditional property manners, like Todd mentioned earlier with homelessness, DLA provides both a sounding board and an advocacy program to come to folks like yourselves. You know, maybe on the Nelnet and Speedway side, we have more resources that can dig into problems like those. But if you're a single property owner, DLA provides a lot of horsepower and other eyes, ears, that can, that have seen those problems before and can help navigate maybe some of those situations. And then lastly, they provide a great marketing program to bring different, unique events to specific areas, shop the blocks, for example. So in summary, very supportive of the program and everything that Todd and the crew, past and present, have put together to get us to this point.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the testifier? Thank you again. Appreciate it. Anyone else here who would like to testify?
Good afternoon, Council. Greg Fraser with WRK, 440 North Eighth Street, Suite 140. We are also in strong support of this expansion. We benefited from the expansion of the BID Maintenance District into the West Hay Market, and have seen the benefit that it does provide to business owners and residents. We do have, you know, issues with trash or homelessness that exist, and that we all have to continue to help support and combat in our community. But the job that the DLA does is, is wonderful in combating that, and in helping that, and helping residents and business owners. We also own property in the new expansion of the BID, and appreciate being able to work with DLA and with its resources to expand that into the area, and provide the same resources and benefit to that area that we've seen in the West Hay Market.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Fraser? All right. Thank you, Greg. Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon. I'm Karen Coontz, 2055O Street in Lincoln. I'm the owner of Constellation Studios at 21st and O Street, which I opened in January 2014. So that's almost 10 years now. I've been watching and waiting for the growth and development as an anchor in that neighborhood. I own my building and a small parking lot, and also the adjacent vacant lot that will be an expansion to my Constellation Studios vision. The plans are in the works, at very early stages right now, to expand my gallery and the community studios. So I'm really committed to the area. And I want to participate in bringing energy and activities. I look forward to the benefits to being part of the expanded BID, as it has been described, such as trash receptacles, landscaping maintenance, and help for the transient population, and inclusion in the promotion of downtown businesses. It's not so far, this east side of downtown. It is walkable, and we're working to make it a destination, and as the entrance to downtown. My mural on the side of the building is one of those landmarks that indicate this is the start of downtown. So I think it's logical to have this expansion. And I do support the proposal. Thank you.
Any questions for Karen? All right. Thank you so much for coming down. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6F? Brandon.
Do I say my name again?
Please, for the record.
Brendan Ackert, 747O Street, number 430, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. I'm in favor of this. I, in the West Hay Market, I have Gate 25 down there. I've seen a tremendous benefit from what the Downtown Lincoln Association can do. I've also lived downtown since 2012. So I've kind of hopped around on a bunch of the buildings out there. Now I have a condo with my wife in the Schoritz Building in downtown. So I'm not only a business owner, but I'm also a resident of the downtown area who's seen tremendous benefit from what the DLA can do. I believe in Lincoln. I've absorbed a lot of my time and energy and money into trying to make it a better place. So that's when I saw the opportunity for the Telegraph District to come along, that I also decided to put a, another business in there, a dog bar. And from the area that I've seen, I know that this area can also tremendously benefit from what the DLA can do. They've got a good track record, that they're already good at what they do, and I know that a lot of their different things that they do will boost the area up. So I'm a huge fan.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 6F? Okay, let's move forward.
Item 6G is approving the expansion of the Downtown Management Business Improvement District to include a new area generally defined on the south by the north side of K Street from 13th, on the west to 21st Street, on the north by the south side of Q Street from 17th to 19th, and the south side of P Street from 19th to 21st Street, on the west by 13th between K and M Streets, and 17th between M and Q Streets, and on the east by 21st Streets between K and P Streets, and including the privately-owned property abutting the east side of 21st Street.
Director C.
Members of the council, Tim Seas, interim Urban Development Director. Again, you've heard a lot about BIDs today. This is the second component of the downtown. So you've heard the testimony about the maintenance BID. This is the management BID. It's a different set of services. It's largely the same area, but this, the method of assessment for this area is based on valuation of the property rather than front footage. As though with any of these special assessments, which is what these are considered, you can make special assessments based on the special benefit received by property owners. In that way, in that sense is why you have the reduction for residential properties for the management area, because they see, receive less of a benefit from this than what commercial properties would receive. And so that's why the debt discount is there. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the management BID.
Any questions for Director C? Yes, councilwoman.
Just one, I think in the earlier presentation, it went by me fairly quickly. The assessment for commercial is $1.05 per thousand. What is the assessment for residential?
It is 45% of whatever the assessment is. And that assessment will vary with budget, right? The, the assessment is really a function of the budget versus the valuation. But the discount given to residential is 45% of the commercial.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 6G? All right, seeing none. Let's move forward to 6H.
I'll be calling 6H through 6J together. Item 6H is approving the North Hay Market Arts and Humanities Center Phase III Redevelopment Agreement between Textbook 21 LLC and the City relating to the redevelopment of property generally located in the southeast quadrant of Block 21 of the original plot of Lincoln, bounded by Ninth Street on the east, private property on the west, R Street on the south, and a vacated east-west alley on the north, together with the Eighth, Ninth, R, and S Street right-ofways in the vicinity of the redevelopment site in downtown Lincoln. 6I is amending the fiscal year 2022/2023 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,43,004 in TIF funds for the North Hay Market Arts and Humanities Center Phase III, Ninth and R Redevelopment Project. And 6J, authorizing issuance of tax allocation bonds for the North Hay Market Arts and Humanities Center Phase III, Ninth and R Redevelopment Project, in an amount not to exceed $3,43,004.
Thanks, Brandy. Hallie Salem, Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th Street, Suite 205. This is another exciting redevelopment project. And we've been here before, talking about this site at Ninth and R. This is, I'm going to condense the name of this project, Phase III North Hay Market Arts and Humanities Hotel Redevelopment Project, to Ninth and R, because it's a little bit easier to say. So the city has negotiated a redevelopment agreement with Textbook 21 LLC. The redevelopment agreement allows for the use of approximately $3 million in TIF, and funding generated from the redevelopment of this property, located at Ninth and R, for site acquisition and improvements related to the projects specified in the redevelopment agreement. The redeveloper public improvements also include TIF-supported improvements, site preparation, environmental remediation, facade enhancements, and energy enhancements. And also, additional funding will go towards supporting a right-of-way improvements within the project area. The project area, the site, is that red box at Ninth and R. And then the site expands further north and south, as well as west, to allow for some additional improvements related to the downtown corridors project, as well as the Hay Market barricades project. So this is a 20-year project that will allow us to do some of those additional improvements, those beyond, above and beyond the typical streetscape adjacent improvements. So the developer is intending to do streetscape adjacent improvements. This is just a draft plan for the streetscape. We will be working with them as part of Olson, Olson's design, to do additional streetscape improvements. So really, what this shows is the outline of the building, and the additional streetscape improvements along Ninth Street and along R Street will actually be bumping out additional into R Street, and be working on that barricade to reduce the crossing distance, as well as manage traffic, rather than with type-three barricades, using a barricade system in Hay Market to help control traffic on event days, game days, and other days that would otherwise require type-three barricades. And they're on board with that work, and we'll be working with them to continue to provide access to the hotel during those times. This is the hotel that we're talking about, Residence Inn. And they will be providing some more information about that. And so that construction is expected to be a $31 million investment in 122-room, six-story hotel, and then generate approximately $3 million in TIF. That land acquisition fee, it's actually purchasing land over a period of time, and controlling the use of that land over a period of time. Demolition and site prep of $325,000. Those corridors improvements that we talked about of $440,000. And then facade enhancements of just over a million. And then the remainder would be funded by the developer, as TIF is not expected to cover all of those developer, redeveloper improvements. The city council adopted the redevelopment plan for this project, adopted the redevelopment project in December 19th, 2022. It's been to Urban Design Committee three times, with approvals from Urban Design Committee for the building, and then some amended changes to that building to create an awning on the building. It was also reviewed by Historic Preservation Commission, and recommendations made at that time to Urban Design. The redevelopers here, representing Textbook 21 LLC, Josh Berger, as well as the hotel manager of the existing Marriott Courtyard, Aaron. And then Ann Post is also here. So if you have any questions, they would be more than happy to help answer those questions. And, but I can answer any questions ahead of that.
Any questions for Ms. Salem from Urban Development at this point in time? Okay. Oh, councilman?
Where are they going to park?
Hay Market Parking Garage, 122 stalls will, that was part of the discussion with other Hay Market projects, and that they had discussed with our parking manager.
So be the one to the south?
Yes, directly to the south. That is the garage that manages the Marriott Courtyard as well. And so both of those hotels park in that garage.
Isn't that pretty full now?
It is quite full, because it's a great location for a garage with the retail, there's a lot of transient parking in there right now. Some of that transient would likely have to move to Hay Market, West Hay Market garages, or Lumberworks Garage on event days, which they already have to do now, so.
Other questions? Councilwoman, yes.
I think I'd like to add, ask a follow-up. So I know we had this conversation back in December when this redevelopment agreement came forward. But with this being built out, does that put the garage, where does it put the garage in percentage of capacity, like, what's filled? So the garage capacity is 408 for Hay Market Garage. The current monthly parkers are 275. So it'd be adding 122 to the monthly parkers, for a total of 397 monthly parkers, if it is used at its maximum monthly parking, which isn't, isn't often. So that would be a football game day, that would be other times where there is an event, a concert, or something else. So it's not 365 days, it's not even every weekend, that all the monthly parkers are parked there. So we have a way to resell parking, even when there is dedicated monthly parkers to a parking garage, to maximize the use by transient parkers, and working with the adjacent hoteliers to make sure when they are full, that those parking stalls are available.
Ms. Salem, just off the top of your head, could you remind me, because I know we had this conversation a few months ago about another development as well, a couple thousand parking spaces in the Haymarket area? Could you remind me as to what that number is approximately in the Haymarket area?
I believe it's close to 4,400 parking stalls in the Haymarket area, including the Marketplace Garage. And as parkers come onboard, monthly parkers come onboard, there will probably be a push toward reeducating people to use those West Haymarket Parking Garages, more so than the Haymarket or Marketplace Garages. Lumberworks still has capacity, plenty of capacity, as well as those West Haymarket Garages.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions for Ms. Salem? Councilman?
I think no.
Okay. Okay.
Mine can always come back up. Let me know.
Sorry, I missed you earlier. My apologies.
Not about parking enough.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Salem. I appreciate it. Ms. Post?
Good afternoon. My name is Ann Post. I'm an attorney with Rembert Ludkey. I'm here representing the developer, Textbook 21 LLC. As Ms. Salem gave the overview of the project, a fantastic overview of the project, so I'll keep my comments a little bit more limited, but as she stated, this proposed project is a 122-room Extended Stay Hotel. And so I wanted to make sure that I clarify when I say Extended Stay Hotel. I think that's a familiar term, but I'm not sure for everyone. You know, when we say Extended Stay, here, I'll show you the fantastic picture we've got. We're talking about a hotel, like a Residence Inn-style hotel. In fact, that is the flagship that the developer is working with in this case, is Residence Inn. So that means, yes, it is still a hotel, but it is a hotel that caters towards guests that are going to have a longer stay. That's going to mean a slightly larger room, slightly different amenities in the room, and different amenities offered at the hotel. This is a market niche that the developer is owned by, is an affiliate of, and owned with, a national company that owns a portfolio, a family-owned national company, Woodbury Corporation, that owns a portfolio of hotels across the country, that also owns the Marriott, the Marriott Courtyard that's going to be right next door. So that gave them the unique perspective to be able to both identify this need in the Lincoln Haymarket and downtown area for the Extended Stay Hotel, while also the unique knowledge of not only Lincoln, of the Haymarket, in fact, of this corner of the Haymarket, including how to park this corner of the Haymarket, and all the unique challenges that come along with having an area that is so fantastic, because it draws crowds, but also comes with its own challenges for drawing crowds. As Ms. Salem said, in front of you is a redevelopment agreement for this project. This project represents an approximately $30 million investment in this corner of the Haymarket, and with this redevelopment agreement, we're asking for just over $3 million in TIF. That includes funds for site acquisition, for site preparation, for facade enhancements, and also for those streetscape improvements that are going to enhance the user experience, that are going to be in line with the, I believe it's called the Haymarket Corridor Enhancement Plan, but Urban Development can correct me if I've got the wrong name there. But the plan that's been being developed with Urban Development and the Planning Department to really enhance the Haymarket and the experience of pedestrians and visitors there. So with that, as was mentioned, with me is Josh Berger of the Woodbury Corporation. Also, we've got the manager of the Courtyard Marriott here to answer any questions, should you have any. I will turn it over to Josh for any additional comments he might have, or to answer any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmembers. Josh Berger with Woodbury Corporation. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. We're thrilled to be here. Two things I'll add. Woodbury won the Residence of the Year about two months ago? Is that about right? So of all the residents in the country, or 3,000 of them, whatever it was, we won the number-one Residence Inn in the country. So that's a pretty proud moment for us. It was a project up in Idaho. But I've studied the market quite a bit. It's a good fit. It's not your typical interstate, sort of off-the-interstate Residence Inn. It's urban. It's something that Marriott's pretty interested in. We spent a lot of time on the design of it, particularly the interior of it, and the fit and finish. Our design team out of Salt Lake City toured the markets, tried to understand the Haymarket and tried to incorporate some of those nuances of the Haymarket into the hotel itself. And then we also pay attention to the exterior, you know, making sure that it fits in to the Haymarket, and, you know, all the right materials are used. We think we did a good job with the courtyard next door. Want to kind of match and fit in from that standpoint. And then the other thing I'll say, so Woodbury is a family-owned office, been in business for about 100 years. We have about properties in about 18 states. And, you know, parking, I've lived in Lincoln for about 20 years. Parking's always, you know, a hot topic, but I'll tell you, we use Lincoln as a shining example of how to do parking, and the fact that Urban Development has the, kind of the Parking Enterprise is what we call it, a parking authority. I mean, it's really fantastic from a developer's standpoint to come in and have the city help with facilitate parking, and it's done a great job. And we use, in fact, we've had numerous calls with other cities across the country and the city of Lincoln as an example. So from that standpoint, I mean, Lincoln's, from our perspective, has done a fantastic job facilitating parking for the growth of the community. So anyway, I'll shut up, answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions for Ann or Josh? Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you both. Appreciate you coming down. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on items 6H, 6I, or 6J, as we've called them altogether? Mr. Ogden.
Good afternoon. Todd Ogden, President and CEO of Downtown Lincoln Association, 206 South 13th Street, Suite 101. Good to see you all again. This property is also part of our current Business Improvement District, and our board was extremely excited about the results of the presentation that Woodbury and their team gave us, and just extremely supportive of what they've already done and represented in this community, not only with the properties, but the hotel, and confident that it will fit within our master plan first and foremost and our strategic plan for downtown and provide the needed Extended Stay visitors. We'll take anybody we can get, and the more people we can get to experience downtown in the Haymarket District is a good thing, and this will do exactly that. So just appreciate everything there and fitting along with the plan, and feel free to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Todd? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item 6H, 6I, or 6J? All right, seen none. Let's move forward.
That ends our public hearing. Next up is ordinances, third reading and related resolutions. Item 7A is a change of zone, 23053, application of REGA engineering to change from R2 Residential District to B1 Local Business District on property generally located at 2211 Winthrop Road, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second?
Second. Carlson, discussion. Seen none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0. Our resolutions, first reading are items 8A through 8G. Our ordinances, first reading are items 9A through 9E. We have one pending list, date certain, that we will have action on next Monday, the 14th. And then our pending list are items 11A through 11C.
Yes, Councilwoman Washington.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to offer a motion to withdraw from the pending list, both items 11A and 11B, and move them to our agenda, pending date certain next week.
Second. Second. Weber, discussion. Seen none, please call the roll.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you.
Very good. Public comment will be, our next public comment period will be August 14. I'll entertain a motion.
I move adjournment.
Second.
Second. Carlson, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckus?
Yes.
Motion carried, 7-0.
Thank you.
Very good. Public comment will be, our next public comment period will be August 14. I'll entertain a motion.
I move adjournment.
Second.
Second. Carlson, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?